All right, I, uh, thanks for everyone coming in. On the October 24th, is there any, I'll call to order now, is there any agenda additions or deletions? I have one here, um, addition to the agenda, Kingsley Bridge Christmas wreaths. Put that under highway.
I'll do it on highway. So moved, I'll add that.
There's a second. Second by Cash. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, is there any other additions or deletions? All right, moving right along. Uh, I asked for approval of the October 10th minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any corrections or deletions? Has anyone seen anything?
I thought they looked good.
All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Done and done. Highway Road Commissioners Report.
We got a few things tonight. Um, we'll start off with, we have a couple residences where we're doing roadside mowing that request their section not to be mowed. And I think what I'd like to do is bring the select board involved in this to back me up, have a discussion with the individuals, um, and give them a, you know, timeframe to hand do it such as they do.
My concern would be that we're obligated to work within our jurisdiction, in other words.
Right away.
Right aways.
Right.
So, you know.
Just want to have that conversation with the individuals to.
Now, I know we have one on Schoolhouse, but they were taking care of their own.
Well, that's what I'm there and it's a, it's gotten to be, the property actually is also on cordillane on that section too.
Correct.
I just, I think I'd like to take one select board member with me, let's do it next spring, plan on it and have a discussion of.
Do you want to do it this fall or next?
I think next spring, so it's freshener by memory that way.
Is there more than that one?
Yeah.
There is.
Yeah. Um, uh, second of all, over the transfer station, there's a bunch of, on the south side of the big shed in the driveway where we have culverts, there's a whole bunch of dead trees and that wood, wood lines through there. Um, we'd like to take those out and so we can actually clean up that area around there and give us more storage space for the equipment and whatnot. And go from there.
I think it's a good idea.
If I don't have time to.
And what else, thinking that'd be like a winter project for?
Don't get into any wetland issue there, does it at all?
Well, that's one thing we gotta look out for too.
Yeah, because there is a culvert on the south side of that, am I correct? Under the old seven?
Yeah, and there's a little.
Yeah, come across from old seven.
Yeah.
Seven B.
That would be the only thing I would say to look at.
If it, if it looks like it's gonna get.
Well, the other thing is the dead trees are hazard, you know, when we're done putting equipment in there and stuff. Not only for ourselves, but for the equipment itself and the people walking around that aren't supposed to be in there.
I don't see an issue with cutting dead trees down. The only issue, as Bob pointed out, uh, would be to, if we're going to expand or do anything, first let's check with the wetlands folks.
Well, the map's on file, because that map was reported when the field, that whole settlement, so we should be able to just pull.
Pull up the map on that part.
See what the map is.
What's what, and I haven't seen the maps, I don't know.
It's on file, or in the email, it's, we have it.
Okay.
But I thought on that map, they only did the budding property, in other words, the east, most easterly side where that stone wall is, I think, I don't think they went over to the, on that map, I don't.
Didn't do, I thought they did all the way around the field.
That was, uh.
No, I, I think Mike is right, it, it's just the property line on the south side.
It was just to the south?
Yeah.
So, yeah, and then they, when we did the walkover though, when she was there, favorite person, um, we looked at, uh, where the new parking lot is, right where that stone wall is, there was a dip right there where they were going to add fill. And she said no, because that section, it's, uh, on the east side of the old ball field, was a wetlands, she didn't want us putting any more fill in there.
Yeah.
But I think let's investigate it. But as far as the trees, taking the trees down, they're a hazard, so.
Yeah.
I don't see any problem with that.
Um, there's another thing we want to clarify from our last meeting about the shoulder machine. That, the, the understanding was, we were out in town when the road, previous road commissioner was there, that he was gonna improve it to use it, not as ownership, and build the skids under it and whatnot. So I just wanted to clarify that. Um, the other thing we got is Alfryshire Bridge received the guardrail rebuild on the north side from the previous car accident we had, I believe the end of May we had. So that's, actually it looks pretty good.
Yeah, it looks good.
Yeah. And Thursday, we got, um, Jeff Slay, Jeff, Jeff Slay from Jordan Milton Cat coming down to discuss about, um, the grader and stuff. And if one of your select board members would like to be involved in that.
What time would it be?
Not sure, he's gonna call me ahead of time to verify that day, Thursday.
Where are we at with our grader right now?
Pardon me?
Where are we at with our grader right now? Is it back on the road?
It's back on the road, it's going, yep. And actually I've reached out and got a dealer that is interested and given us an estimate on it as a direct sale. So I'm waiting to hear back from him when he can get here to give us a, basically appraisal, what he'd pay for, he'd actually buy it, if to buy, you know, if the enough revenue is there instead of trading it. Just looking at different.
That's a, that's a dealer that wants that right there?
Yes.
So.
And it's a.
I don't want to.
The dealer that has that, that make, that has it, has the Gagian's dressers.
So, at the risk of sounding stupid, if a dealer wants to buy it, that tells me there's a lot of life left in it.
Well, the thing is, what he'd do is, is parrot it out, or put the tires on and stuff, or, I don't know.
Because usually dealers don't want scrap.
Well, they basically.
He puts so much work into it.
They know what work's been into that, and not only that, we've actually leased from the same dealership and, uh, I'm glad we didn't have that lease grader too long. Just put it that way. The other thing we have, Katie can fill in on that, is the salt contracts, but they finally came in.
Um, I think in Mike's folder, there's two quotes for salts. Uh, we reached out to three, but, um, American Rock Salt is not servicing Vermont this year.
Is that the one we used? We used American two years ago, didn't we, or something, three years ago?
We used Appalachia.
Appalachia.
And Cargill.
Last year was Cargill, right?
Cargill.
Those are the two quotes you have.
And, mm, I, and Art had called me about the railroad strike and stuff about salt and. And I'm kinda worried.
Have they sent it anymore?
Kinda worried about supply, well, actually we got an email, right, Katie, was that? I didn't go in depth of the email, was there an email?
It was just like a VLCT update, um, that there could be railroad strikes, so they encouraged to stockpile salts by mid-November.
So we better fill the shed right up then. How many loads can we actually get in the shed? If we really push it up?
We, we, we got about sixty-five ton in there right now and we probably can put a hundred, a hundred and forty in there.
What do you use roughly in a decent storm?
About a, oh, a storm, depends on the storm. Um, three, not quite three truckloads, each truck filled up.
So if we're, so if we're stockpiled, how many, roughly how many treatments you think we can stockpile?
Well, with that being said, if we put, say sixteen ton on a truck and usually there's like four ton leftovers, it's about twelve ton that goes on each truck, so twelve times three, thirty-six ton. If I did, uh, this is what, eight, eight storms roughly.
Okay.
Um.
Also, keep in mind, correct me if I'm wrong, Cargill comes by rail, Appalachia is out of the Port of Albany and they truck it here.
Appalachia has huge barns, actually I got pictures on my phone that Pete had sent me.
Right, like, that's.
It's something to keep in mind.
But this store, the stuff, the salt that is inside, uh, big sheds and stuff, and it's not out in the weather, that means you're gonna get more per ton, because.
Moisture.
The moisture.
What's pictures you got there? Are those, Katie, you put on?
And his, his price is ninety-four dollars and forty cents a ton. And, uh, Cargill is eighty-five fifty a ton.
What is Appalachia again?
Ninety-four forty.
I had it roughly as, was it ten thousand dollars more if we went with Appalachia? Which sounds a lot, but I think the salt product is way better and their service is unbelievable.
So.
You're looking nine dollars ton difference.
You're saying, because I thought two years ago you were happy with Appalachia.
Very happy Appalachia.
Oh, so, because.
Last year that Cargill was very hard to get things delivered.
Oh, Cargill was the pain, Cargill was the problem?
I mean, you never know when they're coming load of salt, when you order it. They'll say, yeah, we'll be there in two days and you might see it next week.
And you might not get your full delivery.
If we order five tandem loads, triaxial loads.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't necessarily show up.
Might get two.
And they're the ones that are relying on rail theoretically?
Yes.
And Appalachia is.
I mean, we can ride the wave for a while.
Because.
We're nine dollars a ton cheaper than Appalachia.
Yeah.
We can ride the wave for a while to see if, how the supply is, but if, worst case scenario, we can't get the salt, Pete from Appalachia will be there, and they're, also, they have the contract with Corcellos to haul it local.
Says here, our road salt is stored inside of buildings and is drier than other suppliers. So this actually get more cubic yards of dry salt per truckload, because there's less water, less vines, and less dust and cleaner. So I think you're getting a better project, a product rather, excuse me, even though it costs more, so I think you're gonna.
And, uh, what we found is with the Appalachia salt, the nuggets are larger. And that's, we've had this discussion at the garage with, amongst us. My thought with a bigger nugget, it lasts longer to break down. Um, this, the other Cargill was refiner, like half the size of the nuggets themselves. But I'm just, so, just giving you options. We could be like nine thousand dollars more, i- if you're looking at just dollar for dollar.
Well, I think if you're getting a better product, uh, it, as long as, I mean, I'm willing to spend a little more to get better, if that's what it amounts to.
Well, that and the dependable.
And if they're gonna be dependable, you're actually gonna be able to get it.
It's unbelievable.
Yeah, you, you dealt with them, is what I'm hearing.
Since I've been here.
Yeah, okay.
And the salt is, you don't get chunks or nothing, do you?
Car, so Cargill was the one, because I remember you talking about somebody you were having a hard time with, not as good, so.
Sometimes, one load might come be perfect and next load come, that's where maybe been outside or something and got damp and got chunks and you have to actually lay it out and run over the loader.
To break it up.
To break it up. I mean, you're talking, you know, softball size or small. You know.
I'll make a motion that we go with Appalachia salt for this coming winter.
There's a second for further discussion.
I'll second that.
All right, is there any more discussion?
It sounds to me like, uh, maybe just a little bit more cost-wise, but in the end, you're gonna be money ahead.
Well, like I say, if you're getting a more reliable product and it's actually gonna get here.
Yeah, that's it.
I'm willing to spend a little more for something like that.
And the crew just gets paid to load it and their trucks to take it out, rather than put it through the grader down there to try and munch it up.
Oh, yeah, you mean, if it comes through chunky or whatever, yeah.
All right, there's any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Do you have anything else?
Uh, next thing, that's under my list, but Katie can, we just got, Eric explained it about the Christmas wreaths.
What? Oh, yeah.
Christmas wreaths.
I got a voicemail this morning from Beth Brown, yeah, Limer, she's from the Covered Bridge Society in Vermont. Um, her, she's the chair for the Rutland County chapter and they are doing Christmas wreaths for all the covered bridges in Rutland County, so they're asking permission to put up Christmas wreaths on the Kingsley Covered Bridge.
Mr. Chairman, I make motion we authorize the Kingsley Bridge folks to, uh, or the Covered Bridge Association folks to put wreaths on Kingsley Bridge.
Um, is there a second?
I'll second, but, uh, there's no, no lights on these wreaths or anything, am I correct?
Um, I did not ask that.
I doubt it, there's no electricity on the bridge.
Well, that's what I was thinking, you know, are they gonna pick up electricity somewhere, who knows?
But the other thing is, if you remember Bob in the past, when people used to put all kinds of greenery on there, they wouldn't take it off. We had to go with the road crew a couple times, that was years ago. And so I would suggest that maybe amend your motion and say, uh, that, that, uh, and when the holiday is over, take it down.
I believe.
Yeah, I can, um, so I did call her back and we discussed, um, the date for putting them up would be on December third or around, that's a Saturday, um, or the following Saturday, and then takedown would be approximately January fourteenth or the twenty-first.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, that's good.
Cause she was, um, like she acknowledged that they did not want to put the, the dead Christmas wreaths up for months on end, so, they're aware of that.
All right, any other discussion?
Did anyone second that motion? Did Bob?
Yeah.
All right, there's no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, sounds good. Anything else, Cash?
That's all I have.
Any questions for the road commissioner? All right. Um, approval of the select board warrants, they're floating and drifting, I think. You haven't looked over yet the rate. Um, guests, is there any guests? Public comments. All right, all business, cemetery tree removal bids.
Um, so, I put in your packet, Mike, before, cause I think you guys looked over last meeting, the guy that was selected, uh, emailed and said he had a catastrophic failure to his truck.
Mm-hmm.
It would not be able to do the job.
Who had he picked, remind me?
Chuck Lear.
It was Lear. So what's your recommendation, Kevin, going back to him? The, out of the other two?
Three.
Or three?
Yeah, I think there's four total.
Lear's not in the mix.
But he's out, so.
Oh, okay.
Trees Incorporated.
Trees, I forgot what Trees bid, about thirty-four something.
Yep.
And then GM, which doesn't work for the town before and has actually worked in that cemetery before, comes in about four thousand.
Yep.
But they're working on the second tree also.
Yep.
And any other guys above that, you know, thousands beyond that? Ace, or Versus.
Mm-hmm. So it's between GM and Trees, then in your mind?
GM and Trees, depending what the board wants to do, I mean, uh, we do have the second tree, because he's the one that pointed out the second tree and he was right.
So GM Tree Tech is the one that would work on the other tree as well?
All the Trees never gave, bid was only for the pine. Everybody else was a bid to include the maple tree, so GM would work on the maple tree also.
I'll make a motion that we authorize GM Tree Tech to come in and take care of those two trees.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right.
Kevin, did you have anything else?
Right, I was just going to make a search, get through certain paperwork there.
Putting it together so we don't lose it.
Thank you, Heidi.
Do you have anything?
I mean, Katie.
Do you have anything else there?
Well, two things, uh, second of all, uh, the new rules that we wrote for the cemetery and kind of, of course, they're been approved and everything, and I'm looking for May, uh, November first date. Uh, talking with Katie and Heidi, there's some stuff I'm not comfortable just taking right to the transfer station. There's stuff I'm gonna take right to the transfer station. But there are some stuff that, you know, we discussed, shouldn't probably go there and there, uh, so, we're going, Heidi and Katie, Katie and I, probably with Heidi's input, come up with a, uh, thing, uh, statement on the, for the town website saying, on this date, the laws, the rules are going to affect, these articles are going to be removed, some stuff will be taken, like, you know, artificial flowers are floating around the cemetery, gonna be taken right to the transfer station, but there is some, uh, stuff that, uh, we're gonna collect up in the box, uh, mark it, website. And we're, the plan was to store it year for year and announce it from November first to October thirty-first of next year, and if no one claims it, I mean, I guess that would give most people an opportunity within a year's time to walk up and say, oh, it's all gone, probably call the town, see someone, or they would call the town or somebody, uh, they could have the stuff returned to them.
Your plan is also to post that on the website, right, that information?
Right, well, I guess we were gonna, uh, come up with, offer it, and I guess Gloria's the one would post it on the website, so that's.
Are there any plots specifically that you think we should reach out to the families and say, hey, send them the rules?
I've tried to, I've mentioned one there, I tried to, uh, well, I even had the crematorium reach out to them and try to get, tell them to reach back to me, and they just have never responded, so.
I'm just curious, you know, I mean, how much, how many plots you think are gonna be affected, like, people potentially being really upset? Is it really only a few?
I think probably two.
Two, okay.
I mean, I can do, I mean, I can, there's stuff that's gonna be removed, but, you know, uh, and one, one plot, and I'm gonna start taking the trees out to the grinder, but I'm waiting for the day that whoever, GM or whoever does the tree work, because then that's when I'm gonna take them out and run through their chipper, instead of me dragging them home or finding a bank to go over. Uh, but I think probably only two.
Are gonna be really upset.
Well, they might be, I, I'm, they may understand too, but, you know.
But if you've tried to reach out to them already, you did everything you could, then, you know, it's, they all of a sudden go visit and there's a cross missing or something else, then they can contact the town and then we'll say, well, we.
And right.
Tried to contact you, but.
I mean, they can come here, they can get in touch with Gloria, whoever, and she can call me, I can get in touch with them, I'll deal with them. But, uh, I mean, I, like I said, they, this one particular family hasn't been, you know, responded to the, uh, the crematorium, so.
And are we in process of getting signs printed up so it can be posted on fence, the rules posted?
Well, that was one of the things I wanted to discuss, I, I, I had my favorite cemetery in the state, Barnet Town. Uh, they have these cemetery rules and they sent them to me this weekend, that they have, you can keep this, pass this around.
Good catch, Robert.
Do we even play football?
I mean, we, I, we would tweak it a little bit, but, uh, we would need four, and basically there are signs like, it's like eighteen inches by eighteen, eighteen inches, it's not, little tiny thing, you know. Uh, and we could just mount around the fence right off the bat. Uh, I know we discussed down the road, you know, proper signs like, you know, clearing the flat cemetery.
Yeah.
But that would be something we could get on the, uh, fence right off the bat.
Yep. Yep. Seems reasonable to me.
Yeah, this, yeah, this is close to what you had.
Right.
Written in.
Yeah. They, them and Westford were the ones who pitched for a model book, probably was after, but they've been really helpful.
Well, I don't, as far as that's concerned, this sign, I think we gotta, once again, we'll check whether somebody can make something up or.
Right.
And on a temporary basis, put it on the fences. Most of the cemeteries have a gate or fence or entryway, so. I don't see any problem with that. You all right with that, Cash?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's get them up, yeah.
All right with that, all right?
Yeah.
So do you want quotes for signs, or you just want them?
No, let's, uh, you know, we do everything, we're looking at quotes and stuff like this, so get us something and then we can finalize, you know, who's gonna make the sign up, what it's gonna cost us, and go forward. But you have to have all the information at different cemeteries. So this will be standard, but then, to your point with Spafford Cemetery, you have a sign, is there something that you want to include in this?
Well, we had discussed that about a month ago, about signage, now the cemetery is starting to get shaped up and, you know, identifying them and, uh, that could be something, once we get, if we do, whether it becomes a approved thing by the board or we put it on a valid item, once it gets in the, we could then put that
Yeah, just.
On the post also.
Okay, but temporarily?
Temporarily go around the fence.
Okay.
Do you want something like quoted, that's gonna be like that corrugated plastic that can be, um, like zip tied to the fence for time being, or like what kind of, there's so many different kinds of signs, I think that there needs to be some direction from the board as to what exactly you're looking for.
I'd go with metal. I'd get, I'd get an actual like material.
One-time deal.
Like street sign, like your.
Something that's gonna last.
Speed, speed limit signs that are, that are, that are made, any of the locals can do it, awesome graphics, uh, I know they do them, I know that Green Screen does them, and I'm sure there's others, um, they'll all do it. Your corrugated stuff's not gonna hold up much more than six months or.
One season.
One season, probably, so.
But the metal ones you could.
Metal ones will last.
Fasten to.
But metal ones will last.
And this is just for the rules right now?
Just for the rules for right now, yep.
Right.
But I would definitely suggest metal, get something.
And you want something also posted temporarily underneath that about how, if it's not removed by X date or whatnot, it'll be remo, like, is that included in that? Or if you had something removed?
Well, the plan I'm doing was announcing at such and such date on the town website.
Yeah. Not that idea though, because I feel like.
You could, you could laminate something and post that for temporary. You could, you could put something laminated out there that would last, if you, you know, so I realize we're up against November first, so hypothetically speaking, say, push it to December first. so I realize we're up against November first, so hypothetically speaking, say, push it to December first. I know you're gonna clean up probably the loose stuff before then. But if, or even Thanksgiving or whatever, you could put a laminated sign underneath this, but these are gonna be probably.
Lasting.
Hmm, they are, but I would be willing to bet right now, we got something powder coated back in the summer, made for the fair and it took a month to come in. It's gonna be, it's not gonna be tomorrow. It's gonna take some time. Because you're gonna want that powder coated, you know, that durable, that's gonna last.
But it's been years and years and there's been no sign, so.
Oh, I know.
It will take.
You could even print up the temporaries, laminate them, put them out there for the month of November so that the warning is out there, hey, this is happening. And then as soon as the metal ones get here, you put the metal ones up. Cause laminated are gonna last for a while.
And not that expensive, laminated?
No, well, no, you'd send them to Staples and Staples will make them and laminate them. I mean, it's not gonna be that expensive. I'm pretty sure we have a Staples account anyway, so, pretty reasonable.
Alright, well, we have a plan. So let's see, Katie and Heidi can work on that sign stuff. And moving on.
I got one more item.
Oh, damn.
Really?
Really? It's gonna be kind of
I wouldn't pass.
I like discussing with Heidi already, so, but, uh, Keith Balker gave us the proposal, the, uh, quote for the new stone that the intrinsic had damaged. And I had a discussion with Katie, with Heidi, uh, just, I'll get.
With the office, just.
With the office. And, uh, and my idea, you know, was kind of, in my mind, was kind of simplistic. We just deduct them out from the bill at the end of the year. I mentioned that to her, to Heidi. Heidi said, no, that's not the way to go about it. Uh, we should do it this way. And so I had Katie get in touch with Intrinsic and email them and say, you know, this is the call and the expectation is gonna be that, you know, Balker's gonna be able to reach out, you know, the billing issue would just be between the two of them.
Yep.
So I reached out to Keith on Wednesday just to kind of let him know what's going on, just to keep him in the loop. And he said, just said, I, I, I was doing business with you guys, not with Intrinsic. And, you know, I'd rather keep it that way. And, and he's got some concerns. He, and I said, I'll, I'll, I told him, so listen, I'll share your concerns with the board, but the decision would be made by the board and then I'll let you know what they say.
So my recommendation, hearing that Balker has a concern, is rather than have the paper trail get messy by either deducting it here or deducting it there, little by little, just have it cut and dry. Okay, fine, we're doing business with Balker, Balker bills the town, we pay Balker, and then Intrinsic can just reimburse us.
Bill, we, yeah, we bill Intrinsic.
As long as there's a paper trail.
That's right.
In case the citizens have a question.
Yep.
So that's my recommendation.
That's fine. Do, do you need a motion for that? I don't think you really do.
No, let the, let them.
Just let, let it, it's all on a matter of public record now, anyway.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, let's move on. Do you have anything else, sir?
I am, I am good.
Thank you, Kevin.
You're welcome.
Good job.
Anybody wants to watch the hill monuments go up, just, they're going Friday.
Hill monument?
The ones that are on the ground.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay. That's up here. Yeah. Alright, finance and maintenance agreement, amendment number one, Kingsley Covered Bridge.
This is just because we changed companies, right? Or whatever? They changed the companies or something?
No, this was because the state got a federal grant for their, the bridges.
Okay, yeah, 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 yeah.
We're getting, yeah.
Is it everybody or just you?
No, just me.
I'll make a motion that, uh, the select board chair signed the amendment to the finance and maintenance agreement on the Kingsley Covered Bridge due to the grant approval.
Second it. Okay, everybody understands what's going on? Alright, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
It really doesn't help us, it just helps the state.
Yes.
Cause it's not gonna change our portion at all, I don't think, right? Maybe, maybe minimally?
Yeah, I think it does.
Yeah.
It does, it reduces our.
Yeah.
Minimum, but it's not, like, I thought.
Five.
Okay.
Yeah.
The construction phase will be a hundred percent funded federally.
Okay, so it is a big help to us then. Okay, there you go. I guess I read it too fast, cause I thought it was actually helping, like, reduce what the state was paying towards it, that it, I didn't realize it was actually our share.
Just cause it's a paper trail.
Yeah, I think it trickles down all the way.
Yep.
Alright, um, transfer station hazardous waste items update. Just touched it.
Yeah, so I sent you guys in, in with a couple of weeks ago, that we received from Atlantic Solid Waste for two ACs. Um, I think last year we made the rules that we weren't accepting anything with freon because we got in trouble with solid waste. Um, so I checked in with the transfer station attendant. He noticed that there were ACs, but he was told that because there was no freon in it, they could take it by the other attendants. So I clarified with him that, no, we're not supposed to take them at all. Um, and that's why I left it with them. I don't know if you want to take any further action or.
Yeah, we charge Harry. Yeah, good idea. And that's for thirty dollars, just to, uh.
I think we got a bill in June for hazardous waste as well.
But this is just the paperwork to confirm.
Yeah.
Yeah. As long as the transfer station guys are updated.
Yeah, I mean, keep them in the loop.
Things happen.
Yeah.
Well, since then, we put up that chain link, not chain link, but just.
Yeah, it's a plastic chain.
Just try to defer them from.
I haven't been to the metal bin in quite a while. Our signs are still up, right? Cause we got signs made for no freon stuff and all that.
Propane.
They're all there.
Okay, they are still there, good. Cause it's pretty rare I go to the metal bin, so.
Okay.
Haven't paid attention.
Alright, another new business, Lister resignation. Um, we had gotten a, a letter from Skylar Ambrose. Dear Select Board members, it has been a great honor to have been elected a Lister for the town of Clarendon. Sadly, I must submit this letter of resignation. As of late August first, I've been, uh, working as a full-time teacher at Middlebury, Vermont, Middlebury School, uh, Middle School, excuse me. I am teaching history to students in grades six and seven. I start my day at seven AM, drive through Middlebury and work until at least five PM and drive home to Clarendon. My schedule leaves me very little time to perform my Lister duties. And then, we have another request.
I just attached Kevin's.
Right. Dear Katie, uh, if in the future an opening should arise for Lister in the town of Clarendon, I would like to be considered to fill this position. Sincerely, Kevin R. Peck.
Chairman, I make a motion that we go ahead and accept Skylar's resignation and have Katie author a letter of thanks on behalf of the board for her service to the town of Clarendon. And per our policy, post the position for fourteen days.
Right.
With Gloria on the website.
I'll second. Is there any further discussion?
Well, I'll second that. How'd you done it?
I did.
I, I didn't hear him.
He's fair.
That's okay.
And any other conversations around this? Kevin, we're gonna.
Oh, you're gonna give me another opportunity?
Yeah, would you like to speak anything?
Once again, you've got my letter.
Yep.
I'm interested in filling that position.
What is wrong with you?
You know, I like Bob and George.
You really got problems.
Well, you know, it's, I'll, I'll put it out here, you know, it's a win-win because I understand there's a year left in March on that, on her term.
So you just want to fully?
No, you know, because it's like I said, you know, there's a year left, so I have to run for election.
She's up in March.
This March?
Yes.
I think she's up in twenty twenty-four.
Oh, is she? Who's up this year?
Uh, George, my dear.
Okay.
Bob was elected this, Bob was elected in March, re-elected. I think George.
You can only, you, you, we can only appoint you until March, anyway.
That's by me. And if it's something that doesn't work out, then, you know, I don't, it's not like I'm looking at three, you know, three years or eighteen months.
I think we appoint her for next three years, so you don't leave.
Alright, well, we'll take this up at our.
Ten years.
Yeah.
Uh, Katie, make a note, we'll take this up at our next, uh, meeting. And we'll ask Gloria to post it, uh, as we normally would.
Right.
So. You made the motion.
I did. And it got seconded.
And I seconded.
Yep.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright.
Just the chairman.
Yes.
There's, backing up to the road commissioner's report, there's one thing in my notes I missed, if I can bring that up. Um, last meeting, you requested I go out, find out how much it costs to do shoulder work on the South Creek Road in Pimple Hill.
Yep.
Um, with that being said, Tom finally got back to me today. And he, he'll do the project. Um, it's gonna be almost three hundred ton of material and it will be eight thousand one hundred dollars to, to do the shoulder work. And they can do it, um, he said, after next week, if we, if it gets approved. It will take them, like, South Creek Road for about three and a half hours by the time they set up. It would take the road crew, us, about four days to, to do that with hauling material to, to do the.
Sounds to me like you're saving money, um, both ways for labor and transition with the trucks.
We would have to, with our trucks, it'd be, um, about seventeen trips to Dambie for that material.
Okay.
And that's recycled asphalt at six dollars a ton.
So are you asking us to?
I'm asking you to, if you would approve it, to go ahead and accept him to do the shoulder work on Pimple Hill, the one-way and South Creek Road.
Um, I just want to get Trezor's thoughts on this. Does that sound?
That's part of the road reconstruction.
It would be under, right, resurfacing and reconstruction, the budget is a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And I have not yet received any invoices for any of the paving that's been done yet either, so I can't give you an updated balance on that.
What, what are we expected to be billed for?
Uh, what that project was down the South Creek Road, I'm thinking.
I think it was thirty-two.
That was for the, for the.
Excuse me.
What was that? We got the grant for it.
The grant was for thirty-two thousand.
Thirty-two thousand.
I think.
We're talking about sixty, seventy thousand total, if, if that.
Yeah.
So there's still.
Not sure.
Technically, there's still room in the budget?
I think, I'll also remind you guys, I think you are gonna revisit paving too in the spring, depending on prices.
Mm-hmm. I know with fuel costs going up and stuff, that probably, it'd probably be about the same price for paving.
And he could get that done before winter.
Mm-hmm. First part of November.
I mean, we're going into theoretically slow time now, so what are you, I mean, is, is it time constraint too, that you don't have time to do it?
Um, we could work it in. And if you, the board feels that you want us to, you know, spend that time and the fuel and of haul and material like that, we can do it. We got means to do it, but.
There's no chance that the asphalt projects ran over, that we're gonna get more bill than we expected. Cause we also authorized the other top coat down here too.
Mm-hmm. Can't remember what those figures were. They were like, were they, geez, I don't even know what they were. We'll have to wait to see what the actual invoice is. I mean, we can, we as a road crew, yes, we, if you want us to go ahead and do that, we can do it.
Or, I mean, I, I guess my question was, are you in the midst of other projects that you don't have time for it, or what are you?
We, right now, we're just finishing up, getting ready, actually, like, today, we're putting stone pole frames on and getting ready for.
She's doing maintenance stuff.
Maintenance and stuff like that. But, I mean, we can work it in.
Is T Road pretty much done at this point?
It's done.
It is?
Yeah, for the section that we done. And actually, Katie's been working on that, putting the figures together and stuff and, uh, it's today, Monday. Sometime this week, I'm gonna get, sit down with her, go over more stuff with it. And we can, you know, the material alone's about two grand roughly.
Okay.
And you're talking four days, Cash? Three to four?
Uh, with us?
Can take us a week or something.
Take us a week to do that.
Yeah.
They take them like four, four hours to do it. Cause they get the shoulder machine.
Yeah.
They actually back up, this looks like a paver and just, it goes, like they did walk them out. And also they.
Take a week and that'll be the three, am I correct?
Yeah. And they, um, you know, and they're, they also provide, uh, flaggers and traffic control and stuff like that, all of that, too.
Within the grand?
Yeah. Everything. We had no, that's all start to finish project.
I think it's beneficial for the town to do that. Um, not have you guys do it, let the, this contractor come in. I think you have some money in there. And that'll keep you guys working on other projects. You get in the middle of something like that and all of a sudden you gotta go someplace else.
I mean, it's something, you know, we can do. It's gonna be time. And like you said, it, those, it's like T Road, there's things that popped up during, during the week that we had to pull off that and go fix this or whatever. I just throwing it out there.
You know, to me, if, if that's gonna take a week and you can get it all done for eighty-one, you said?
Yeah. I mean, we gotta buy material anyways, no matter which way you go, and that's about around
Yeah.
Eighteen, two thousand dollars just.
Two thousand, you're looking at two ten.
No, yeah, if we did it.
Yeah.
He's doing it, you're eight thousand or eighty-one hundred.
Eighty-one including material or?
Yeah, that's total.
That's total.
Total, eighty-one hundred.
You know, and this time of year.
Start to finish.
And there's a bunch of people sitting out there that want us to say this, but let's face it, we could get snow. You know, we're getting late enough, uh, we've seen it earlier before. My thought is, you know, I'd almost let them go ahead and do it and let them get their equipment ready for winter and this and that, but that's just me.
I mean, if, if they are doing the project and stuff, that we, we continue to just do other things anyways. It's not like we're setting in the rogeries like that.
I, I agree with, what, what's your opinion?
Uh, I, I misunderstood and thought that the material was on top, so it was gonna cost us ten. That's what had me worried about it, so.
Total project.
I mean, so if you got roughly two in there, materials, they're providing the flagger, they're providing quite a bit of personnel.
Yeah.
That's the bit.
They got a sweeper.
And it gets done quicker.
I would say that probably it's worth it in that case.
What do you think, Art?
Whatever you guys want to do. I just don't want us, I don't, I don't want us to pay eight thousand dollars while these guys sit around and do nothing, but if they have other projects to do, then it's fine.
And that's the case, right?
Mm-hmm.
So.
And that's Fuller.
Want to make a motion on that or?
I made them alternate. Let somebody else make one for a change.
There you go, Bob.
Give Bob a chance.
I'll make a motion that we have Fuller do the shoulders on the Creek Road. And all the shoulders gotta be done.
So it's Creek Road and Pimple Hill, right?
And Pimple Hill together. And Pimple Hill together.
Yeah, cause that Pimple Hill, that's not gonna be a real big one there.
No, but it's gonna take some material because that bank is sloughing out.
Yeah, I see it is, a little bit.
It needs to be built up before it starts getting broke off.
Yeah.
The payment part.
Let me make a motion that the Fullers do it, both of them.
And that's another road.
For the eighty-one hundred.
I'll second Bob's motion.
All right, is there any further discussion? Hearing on all those favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay. Now, I have one other thing here, and Vermont Deputy Town Forest Fire Warden.
Oh, um, that was from last meeting, you guys had appointed TJ and Clayton and then, but TJ hadn't filled out his paperwork, so he has signed it now, I just need you all to sign it.
Okay, but we did, we did approve him, yeah, all right, so I'll.
So we just gotta sign it?
Sign it, great.
Yeah, I just had that on the table.
He did make it in and sign it then?
Yep.
I didn't look.
Yeah, he did.
Yeah, Matt called him, he came right away.
Pass it that way, good man. All right. So Heidi, you didn't, do you have anything else that you, on the officer report?
So the taxes had been due, property taxes had been due October fifteenth and the total amount that went delinquent this year was a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred sixty-nine dollars and eighty-six cents. That's down from last year, last year, two hundred and fifty-five thousand went delinquent, so we're almost at a hundred thousand dollars less. Um, not sure why, but we'll take it.
Yeah, very good.
Yeah. Um, that has now been turned over to the delinquent tax collector. That's all I have to report.
Okay. Katie?
Um, just to follow up, um, Shannon Pitlick was in at the last meeting for, um, asking permission for the coin drop and I followed up with her that they decided to do it in the parking lot of a high school.
Good, okay. Gloria, do you have anything you'd?
I do, we have a general election coming up in two weeks, November eighth, we're open ten to seven, and I have three hundred and fifty absentees already turned in, so.
Wow. I don't think it's gonna be crowded.
You said three hundred and fifty? Wow.
That's almost the same as when we have a Primberg election, right? When you have.
Total, yeah.
Yeah.
Holy smokes.
We still got two weeks left, so, and some people are coming in, that they said they were coming in, so.
Uh, as tax collector, you have anything you'd wanna report? Okay. Um, we have, hold on a second. Let's do selectmen's concerns before we go into executive session, so Bill doesn't have to sit here and wait. Art, do you have any concerns?
Nope.
Bob?
Nothing tonight.
I'm good.
I'm all set.
I'm all set.
Okay, then I would accept a motion to go into executive session for personnel and I would ask the tax collector.
I quit.
Thank you. Uh, to join us. So is there a motion to go into executive session?
So.
I'll second.
Okay.
You said zone one, right, I'll second.
All those in favor in motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?